Everybody else set? Good evening and welcome to this Monday, June 25, 2018 Eden Prairie Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and first item on the agenda is to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me and stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Can I have a motion on the approval of the agenda for tonight, or any discussion in advance of that?
I'll move through the agenda.
Second? Who said the second?
Chuck.
Thank you very much. That's a motion by Higgins and a second by Weber. Thank you very much. The agenda passes. Next is our meeting minutes from the last meeting we had on June 11, 2018. Are there any discussion points for those meeting minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, yeah, wait, wait a second.
Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to find it.
Commissioner Mette and I were talking, and I believe on the motion, this would be at the end of the discussion, our second discussion, I don't have the page number, on the Culvers discussion, the motion should be carried five to one as Commissioner Mette voted nay on it. It says five to zero on the minutes.
Thank you for that typographical clarification. That was five to one, yes.
That's all I have.
That's all you have? Commissioners, any other comments? I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes according to that one change.
Move to approve the planning commission minutes dated June 11, 2018 with the amended change.
Second.
We have a motion by Kirk and a second by Weber. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I don't believe we have any informational meetings tonight or public meetings, so we're going to go on to our public hearing. We do have one public hearing tonight for the Lincoln Park Apartments Cascade at Town Center, and since it is a public hearing, we're going to hear from staff first with a staff report, then we'll invite the applicant to come up and present if they so wish, and then we'll ask for any audience participation if they have any questions, if anybody shows up this evening. So Julie, would you run us through the staff report, please?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, the request before you this evening is twofold. One, it is a request to amend the PUD for the existing Lincoln Park to be rebranded as Cascade at Town Center, and the other is to rezone the property. The property is currently zoned community commercial and received PUD approval back in 1999 when the project was constructed. Since that time, the comprehensive plan has been updated to designate this property and others for Town Center, so with this application, they're requesting a rezoning to Town Center in order to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. The amendment to the PUD really focuses on the conversion of some square footage on the ground floor from existing office/retail space to proposal for 16 studio apartments. So the Lincoln Park property has ground floor uses that include office and retail type of space, and there is an interior corridor within that area. So the applicant, after recently acquiring the property, is proposing to convert that area behind the corridor to those 16 studio apartments. The area fronting, the facade or the exterior of the building would remain for commercial and office uses. Staff is recommending approval of the PUD amendment. There are some waivers that are noted in your staff report. One, of course, is to increase the density because if we're adding units, it increases the density of the project. In addition, there are other waivers that are being requested because of the change, proposed change to Town Center. Of course, the Town Center zoning district is going to have different performance standards than the community commercial, so they're not proposing any changes to the building, but rather the waivers would need to be requested in order to align with the Town Center zoning standards. The property is subject to a tax increment financing district, and as a part of that TIF requirement, 20% of the units need to be provided at affordable levels. So currently, there are 38 units within the property that do meet that affordability requirement. With the addition of units in order to maintain consistency with that 20%, four additional units will need to be provided at the appropriate affordability levels. In addition, as you know, the city of Eden Prairie has recently begun a inclusionary housing practice where roughly 10% of the units have been set aside in perpetuity for, at certain affordability levels. We've done that on several projects recently that have come before you. So along with this proposal, staff is also recommending that 10% of the new units, which would be two units, would be set aside for inclusionary housing at the appropriate affordability rates, one at 50% AMI, one at 80% AMI. Staff is also further recommending that upon termination of the TIF district, it's currently slated to run through 2027, but upon termination of the TIF district, that 10% of the overall units in the property would be maintained at affordability levels as outlined in your staff report. So if my memory serves me correctly, 10% is 21 units would need to be maintained as affordable once the TIF terminates. And all of that would, all of that language would be anticipated to be included in the development agreement so that it is of record, and any future property owners would be aware of those requirements. So staff is recommending approval of the request, subject to those conditions and those listed in your staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, though I do know the applicant has a PowerPoint presentation that they'll share with you as well.
Thank you very much. Maybe just a quick question from me, and I'll offer questions by the commissioners as well to staff before we continue. The application also includes exterior improvements besides the interior improvements that you spoke about, specifically the new driveway relocation, I believe it's along Eden Road, and preparing for the light rail station, Town Center light rail station. Could you refresh everybody's memory on the status of the Town Center light rail station? I remember originally in the planning process, that was going to be a deferred station, and maybe speak to the exterior improvements with the landscaping and the driveway?
Yep. Mr. Chair members of the commission, there are some exterior improvements that are planned as well. For instance, there is some painting that will be done, and that may already be underway because that does not require Planning Commission City Council approval to change paint colors. There's also some landscaping improvements that are proposed as a part of this. No trees would be removed, however, since the project's roughly 20 years old, it is in need of some trimming and cosmetic upgrades with regard to the landscaping, so there'll be some maintenance that will go on with that. In addition, there will be a landscaping bed that will be installed at the corner of the property along with some new signage that is proposed that staff will review under a separate, separate process. With that landscaping refreshing, they will be looking to include native landscaping and pollinator species as well in order to provide some additional sustainability features on the site. With regard to your question about the LRT and Town Center Station, you're correct. At one point, the Town Center Station was deferred in light of the entire budget for the project. However, the city applied for regional solicitation grants and was awarded a grant. Therefore, because of those grant funds, we're able to work with the project office to get the Town Center Station as a change order back into the project. So it's not part of the base project, but it would be a change order as that project moves forward so that it can be constructed at the same time as the rest of the line and, in theory, be open at the same time that the line is operational. So there will be some additional modifications to the site as a result of the Eden Road extension and with the LRT project, but that's not part of the request that's being considered this evening, of course. That'll be a separate process through the LRT project, and I think I've hit on all your questions.
You have, thank you very much. I appreciate your thoroughness. Commissioners, any other questions for staff before we ask the applicant to make their presentation? Commissioner Mette?
Julie, just so I can understand this a little bit better, can you explain the affordability? It sounds like there's a different affordability requirement under the TIF as opposed to just under our general inclusionary zoning. Can you explain the two different requirements?
Yes, so the tax increment financing district that was approved back when the project was constructed does require that 20% of the units be set aside because there are, is public financing involved with that. So that's, that's one issue. The second issue is a more recent practice that the city has recently adopted, or I shouldn't say adopted, has put into practice with several of multifamily projects that have come before the city recently that have not received public subsidy or, or any type of public participation with financing. So what the conversation has been with City Council about those types of projects, as well as what we've seen with those recent approvals, is that 10% of the units be set aside at affordable rates, half of them at 50% AMI or average median income, and the other half at 80% AMI, and those affordability rates would be maintained in perpetuity for the life of the project. So it wouldn't terminate or have a sunset clause after, you know, a specific timeframe of 10 or 15 years, something like that.
Thank you, and what's the level of affordability that the TIF requires?
The TIF requires at 50% AMI, I believe. It's in your, it's in your memo, but I believe it's at 50%.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, but I think I'll defer it until after the component's presentation.
Fair enough. Any other commissioner questions for staff? We'll move on then. Would the applicant like to address the commission with the presentation? Please step to the podium and state your name.
My name is Mark Swerdlow. I am founder, principal and chief operating officer of Magellan Investment Partners, the day-to-day owner-operator of Lincoln Park Apartments.
You may begin.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of you today. Julie did a great job of summarizing our intent. We acquired the asset in December of 2017 from T.E. Miller. If you know the history of the property, T.E. Miller had taken that property over just after construction and has managed it. We saw this as an opportunity to acquire an asset in a, in a location that we've had experience in owning in Minnesota. Magellan Investment Partners is a multifamily operator. We acquire conventional apartments in many different cities and do value-add improvements in spending money both in interior and exterior. In this case, we found an asset that has needed capital. It had been maintained fairly well, but not a lot of money invested into it. So when we acquired this asset, we had a pretty strong business plan to invest substantial capital. As evidence, and I can show you in the PowerPoint, there's just some photos here, this is just an exterior photo of the property, but our, our plan is to invest approximately $2 million into the amenities of the property. So as you can see by these properties, on the left side are pictures of the club room of the property. On the right side are improvements that we've already completed to make it a much more up-to-date, spending substantial amount of money and improving both the, the improvements within it. We've taken out the ceiling and opened it up, make it much more inviting to our residents. In addition, again, here you see on the left side, the existing fitness room. On the right side, we built a completely new fitness room with all very high-end fitness equipment. And then, as Julie spoke about, so interior-wise, that's, that's some of the improvements. If you see here up on top is what we have proposed for the new monument sign at the corner of Eden and Singletary with all of the new landscape improvements that Julie spoke about. And then also on the lower side, there are two very large courtyards at this property that have been not maintained very well. They're not very much inviting to the residents. Our intent, and we're just finishing up bidding on this, is to do, revitalize both of this. This, what you're seeing is on the west side of the property, west exposure on the property, and this will be what we consider our adult courtyard where we are putting in, on the left side where you see those lounges is the pool area, indoor pool. We are actually going to put in a garage door so it can open up during the three or four months of summer here so that the residents can enjoy this. Putting in grilling stations. We're also putting in outdoor garden space where the residents can actually plant fruits and vegetables with water barrels to retain water and be able to recycle into the vegetable gardens and some other lounge areas. And then the other court, which we do not depict here, although we do show a, a plan of it, our intent is to make it a children's play area, including grilling stations, other areas, climbing area for the children, and other areas for them to relax and stuff, and it will all be soft court type of areas. But, so our plan is to make these substantial improvements into the property. This is the layout of the adult courtyard, as you can see. The top part is where the swimming pool will be, where the indoor pool is, with the garage, and then the, the planting area on the right side, and then all the other lounge areas and stuff. So again, we're investing a lot of money into the amenities. The other part of this plan, there's currently 186 apartments in the property, all pretty much unimproved from its original state, so the original appliances, countertops, cabinets, all those things are the same. We are currently instituting a plan to upgrade each of the individual units where we're redoing counter, the cabinet faces, putting in hard surface granite countertops, flooring, new appliance package, new lighting, Nest thermostats. So we're bringing the property up to a more current standard as we see with all of our competitors, and we've had great reception from that. We've renovated at least 15 out of 18 already to date. But that's the whole plan is to change the property and make it competitive with all of the other assets in the property. So when we did, when we looked at this property and saw the opportunity here, we saw that this commercial space, while its original use made sense, what we've seen is a demand for more housing in Eden Prairie, and we are multifamily operators, and thus we saw the commercial space, certainly the commercial space that isn't really street-facing as an opportunity to add residential units. Based on the floor plan, we came up with this site where we add in 18 studios, and when you look at the property today, we have, let's see the numbers, we have, okay, I'm sorry, my notes, too many stuff here. We have a good breakup of three-bedroom, two-bedroom, and one-bedroom, so adding studio apartments will make a big difference to the property and also make it affordable in a price per unit basis for renters. So that was the idea of providing studio apartments with an average of 595 square feet on this first floor. We will separate the access between the residential units and the commercial space, maintaining about 50% of that commercial space. We've already been in discussions with some of the existing commercial tenants to relocate and expand. They've, they've founded a great property to be occupying. And then creating that courtyard, giving access to many of those units to the courtyard with balcony so that they can access and be outdoors there, too. So the whole plan is to take advantage of space that probably is better used as a residential component and retaining the, the commercial component for those areas that over time may have a viable retail opportunity. Today, we talked with multiple commercial brokers and found that this would not be viable to convert today to, to a pure retail use. There's certainly access retail in the area, but what we do think with the light rail station coming in, that there is a potential over time to make this more of a retail use than the commercial use that currently exists. And with our tenant base, we have that option. They're mostly short-term uses, they're much, they're very small spaces, a couple hundred square feet, but they are local users that find this space incredibly cost-effective and is well-received from their own base of customers. So that's why we continue to see that use as, as very viable. That is all of my presentation. By the way, as it relates to the light rail station, there is a portion of the property where they are going to remove that north access, where Eden Road's going to be expanded out. Metro has already done a condemnation of that corner, and so once that program, once they start forward with construction, what they will do, as Julie mentioned, is move the curb cut down along Eden Road, and that, that area will be enclosed, closed off with mounds and, and landscaping. So our residents will have a different access point, but still be able to access that lower garage. I thank you for your time, and certainly I valed before any questions, stay up here or sit down.
Why don't you stay up there for a moment?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant at this time? Commissioner Weber?
Yeah, I wonder how the use of studio apartments is going to assist in the need for affordable housing? Is that, is that an identified need you found for affordable housing with studio apartments?
Well, certainly with our property in the breakup, because we have, of the 38 units, 20 are three-bedroom apartments for affordable, so a lot of families are accessing those, but we have a good diversity of the remaining units of two-bedrooms and one-bedrooms, so we think that, I think in the, the plan that was submitted, it was suggested that we actually not all of the six affordable units be studio, that we're going to allocate that among two second, two-bedroom units also. So it'll be a very small amount of studio apartments that will be treated as affordable, and there is certainly a need. There is not a lot of affordable studio apartments.
And how many of the three-bedroom did you say would be?
20 of, well, currently 20, 22, thank you Julie. 22 of the 38 affordable units are three-bedrooms right now.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I've got a couple of questions. The first one relates to the, I guess what you're calling the, the adult open area where there's the pergola and the gas grills? Or I presume they're gas grills, are they gas grills?
Yes, they are.
The question is, are they propane or they have a direct line to your gas line?
They have direct line, and what we're going to do is the current grills that are in place, we're going to replace them with new grills and new stations.
And directly connected to the building gas line?
Yes.
Okay. Second, on the question, you, you talk about you're installing Nest thermostats, is that directly related to an Excel conservation program, or do you just prefer Nest over like EcoBee or Honeywell?
We, we, actually, it is not connected to Excel. We did look for whether there are any rebates or otherwise, we could not find anything. So we've, we've been installing Nest at our other properties, but we certainly would look at other viable alternatives. It's been incredibly well-received from the residents.
And are the residents controlling, or is it the building that's?
The residents have control.
Okay. And the last one, I know we don't really talk about parking, or I guess we do kind of talk about parking, and this is my, for, for, this is the free bingo space for everybody. How many EV units do you have?
Zero today.
Do you have any plans to install EV?
We certainly, if there is a demand, we certainly would consider adding those, both in whether interior for the underground parking or for exterior, or both, yes. We have, in fact, what I didn't talk about is that Magellan Investment Partners is part of a Magellan Development Group out of Chicago. They are very much ahead of the curve as it relates to EV, so at each of their properties, we have a direct connection with the right installers and everything, so it's certainly something at this property we would consider.
So considering that's going to be right next to a, a line, I would recommend, I guess the recommendation would be to ensure that you do have sufficient EVs, considering that you'll be very close to.
No, it's an excellent idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great idea. Speaking of parking, just to jump on that point, you showed us half the floor plan, I think the south half. Are there corridors that connect up to the elevator system that will allow the new residents on that south half of first floor to have access to the underground parking?
Yeah, there's both, there are access points to two elevators on that lower level, but also direct access to the garages.
Okay.
So they don't necessarily, right now, the upper level is used by commercial tenants and the lower level is used by residential, but with this change, we will have residential units using the upper level parking, and so they won't have necessarily need the garage, they can have direct access off of the common corridor.
Thank you. And did I understand that the improvement on Eden Road, the new driveway, is deferred action until Eden Road gets pushed through by the city? Is that part of this application at all?
No.
It's not part of this application?
No, it's not part of this application. In fact, Metro will be, it's not something that will be taken care of, it's part of the light rail station.
Okay, all right, very good. I'm just going to interject then that when that improvement happens, I noticed that that will create somewhat of a, a dead end on that north driveway leading to your underground parking. For surface parkers, that would be a dead end, and, and where the curve in the drive aisle is shown on your plan, maybe that would be a good place for a little tea turnaround for someone who's looking for surface parking but hasn't found a stall?
Mr. Commissioner, it's an excellent idea, and that's part of the plan, that I've seen from Metro. They're actually, one of the other bigger points of that, not only is it a dead end, but the waste haulers come to pick up the roll-offs from that location, so they are putting in an area so that they can back up and turn around.
Very good, very good. Any other questions of the applicant before we go to the public statements?
I, I have a question, but more for Julie, really, than the applicant.
Go right ahead.
Julie, why, why are we rezoning this? To me, the reason behind it, I believe, I believe this is a pretty good project, but Town Center multi-use, we went, we went way out of our way to make the Town Center zoning very specific, particularly pedestrian-friendly, and to be honest, it just doesn't fit this property, that aspect of it. Now, perhaps there are other aspects that overwhelm that, or it really doesn't matter, but is, you know, if we didn't rezone it, would that have, would that lower the number of waivers? Would that have, what kind of impact would that have?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, so there's been an evolution, if you will, on this site, so the Town Center zoning, Town Center guiding, Town Center zoning, Town Center design guidelines all came into play, I'm going to say in the 2006 to 2007 timeframe?
Way after this project.
Way after this project, but this project was kind of leading the way in that direction. So there was some considerations given with that PUD within the community commercial district in order to achieve some of those goals of the Town Center, because as I said, it was evolving along the way. Now, when the comp plan was approved in 2008, 2009 that designates this area as well as other properties around it for Town Center, it, it understood, or, you know, the city understood that there were some existing properties there and rezonings may not occur for quite some time, but state statute does require that zoning be consistent with your comprehensive plan. So while there are waivers that are being sought because this project is, remains a very viable project and further some of those visions, there's a need to make it consistent with the comprehensive plan and establish that zoning. If, as this property ages, it ages out and needs to be redeveloped, the zoning will be in place that the city desires.
So it's very much transitional?
Yes.
And I agree with you, this, rezoning isn't something that would be a horrible thing. It, it just didn't quite fit, but the comp plan is, is the answer. It's got to be consistent with the comp plan.
Correct, sir.
Great question. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point in time, I would like to open it up to any questions or comments from the public and the audience, but seeing none, we'll move on. I think this is a great project, too. Very, very supportive of it. I'm interested to see what other commissioners have to say. Any deliberatory remarks?
I'd just like to make a comment, if I could, about that mix of units that you have. What I hear in the community an awful lot is the shortage of three-bedroom, and when I'm looking at two and three-bedroom, you have 30 out of 38. That's kind of impressive. So it's, I think it's addressing a very distinct need in Eden Prairie right now. There's an awful lot of families, you know, there, I hear it all the time about the three bedrooms, and that kind of surprised me when I first read that, how many there were, so I'm thinking it's looking pretty good on that aspect. Good job.
Commissioner Higgins?
Yes, I just have a question regarding the security for the proposed new units, the small units that will be replacing what now are used as rental for, for commercial or other. other purposes that you think could easily serve better as units for people to rent for their own.
Well, for purposes of security, our design, our plan shows, we're going to have electronic FOB access. So, there won't be the ability of commercial tenants or commercial users to access the residential component. The residential corridor that we would create will be locked out on both ends. Really, we're going to be able to better limit commercial tenants' access to the property, because currently, commercial tenants are able to access through the main lobby and then have their run of that first floor. This will allow us to limit the commercial tenants' access. In fact, the main lobby that is used for operating the commercial space today will be converted to be purely for residential tenants and prospective tenants. Commercial tenants will have their own two access points on the property with a call-in center, and thus, the commercial tenants will have to allow access to those people. And their ability to access will only be that comment, that one corridor. They will not have access to any other areas. In fact, we spoke with one of the operators there that's a chiropractor and talked about his, one of his people that worked for him, physical therapist, actually used the fitness center. So, we got to figure out a way to ensure, you know, who's accessing it, proper waivers and everything else. But we are very concerned, because previously, commercial tenants come in through that garage and could pretty much access any part of the property. So, I appreciate that question. Thank you.
Just a general comment. I think, I think this is a nice upgrade. I'm happy to see the affordable housing part of the plan and your support of that. And I think, you know, it's a transition going the direction we want to go for the town center. Isn't perfect, but, you know, we'll get there. So, I'm supportive of the project.
Thank you. Well, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing if someone wishes to move that along. Mr. Chairman, move to close the public hearing?
Second.
I had a motion by Kirk and a second by, was it Weber?
Sure.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, move to recommend approval of the Lincoln Park Apartments Cascade at Town Center project based on staff recommendations, and the information contained in the staff report dated June 21, 2018, and plan stamped dated June 1, 2018.
Thank you. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Sneaking up on me again. Great. We had a motion by Kirk, another second by Weber. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Appreciate you bringing this great project to us. That's the only public hearing on the agenda this evening. When, okay, Julie's moving over there to the other station. She's going to give us a planner's report on Aspire 2040 update.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, as we talked about at our, I think it was at our last meeting, over the course of the summer, we're going to do a review of a couple of chapters at every meeting of the Aspire Plan in order to familiarize the commission with the draft document, answer any questions that you might have, get any feedback that you might have. I know that the commission has been very involved with the city council in the drafting of this plan and the discussions, but I know not all of the commissioners have been able to attend all of the work sessions. So, there might be some new information for some folks and an opportunity for them to ask questions. At this point, we're not looking for grammatical or formatting type of comments. In this setting, you certainly can provide those. Feel free to email those to me, and I'm happy to compile those as well. But know that staff is reviewing this draft document, and we're wordsmithing and catching some of those grammatical typo-type of things. What we really want to get at in our conversations with you over the next few weeks and months is, as I said, making you familiar with the document as a commission, so that when we hold the public hearings in the fall, we're able to really focus on the comments and concerns that are raised by the residents and property owners that might be coming forward to speak on the various topics. So, this evening, we're going to be reviewing the Eden Prairie Today and Eden Prairie Tomorrow chapters. So, the Eden Prairie Today chapter really focuses on outlining the planning process, describing how the document is organized and laid out, also setting the context for where Eden Prairie is located within the region, because as you know, the comprehensive planning process is one that all communities in the metro area are going through right now. We're all under that same timeline. So, it is working to achieve alignment with the Met Council's policies as well as alignment with other communities in our proximity. We also, in the Eden Prairie Today chapter, list all of the contributing plans and studies and reports that were utilized in order to inform this draft document. We also look at providing a market and demographic overview for the, for the community, and we'll get into that a little more detail as I continue on. And then, also summarizing the results of the community outreach. So, as you'll recall, back in 2017, when we started this process, there was a robust community engagement process that was held. And I think we're going to talk about that in the next couple of slides. So, the project initiation started in early 2017. There was conversation with staff and kickoff with the city council and the Planning Commission in order to outline what the process was going to be, what the timeline was going to be to complete this. As you well know, the city's required to submit our comprehensive plan by December 31 of 2018. So, we're right on track for doing that. The plan is out for its six-month review by adjacent jurisdictions and communities. So, we've actually started to get some of those comments rolling back in. And then, we'll hold formal public hearings at the Planning Commission and City Council in the fall in order to meet that timeline to submit to the Met Council in December. As a part of the community engagement and stakeholder analysis that was done, city utilized a variety of different methods for gaining feedback. There were the S-maps, the little pin maps that were on the city's website, where you could identify positive attributes, as well as those attributes in the community that might need a little more attention. There were focus groups related to each of the topic areas within the comp plan. So, there was a housing focus group, transportation, arts and culture, sustainability, parks and recreation. There were all sorts of focus groups that actually met early in the process. And then, once we had some draft thoughts put together, those groups came together again to provide feedback on those. In addition, we, as staff, were present at a variety of different community events, be it Rib Fest or Arts in the Park, in order to get some feedback. There were questions that were asked on City Connect, the city's interactive survey mechanism that you, we utilize on our website in order to get feedback from the community on a variety of different questions. What do you think about additional commercial development in southwest Eden Prairie? What are your thoughts with regard to housing? There was also a very concerted effort to update the city's housing study. We hadn't done a housing study in quite some time, so an inventory was done. The city worked with the consultant that is doing the comp plan as well. And we had several focus group meetings, at least six of them, related to housing, and some of you sat in on those focus groups. And in addition to that, there was also online engagement with millennials and with empty nesters. So, we got a lot of feedback at both ends of the spectrum, because this is a 2040 plan, understanding what our current needs are and what our needs will be over the next 20 years. So, we got a lot of great feedback from the community. We also took a look at field review. The consultants, as well as staff, went out and reviewed the community as a whole to take a fresh look at it, where, what properties may need a little more attention, which ones might be ripe for redevelopment, what could be done to bring them closer to compliance with, with city requirements. So, all of that review was done as a part of the initial phase of drafting this plan. And now, we're at a point where we've pulled all that information together and have the draft plan that you have in front of you, as well as out for community review. As we've discussed before, the organizational structure of the plan, it has 10 chapters. Eden Prairie Today, Eden Prairie Tomorrow are the first two chapters. And then, after that, it dives into the topic areas of land use, housing, economic competitiveness, transportation, community facilities, parks and open space, water resources, infrastructure, and implementation. So, all of those chapters will be chapters that we will cover in the upcoming Planning Commission meeting. So, if you have specific questions about those, as we get to those topic areas, that's where we'll be able to have the staff people that are our local experts, if you will, be able to answer some of those questions. In addition, the plan includes call-outs with regard to social equity and diversity, community health, and sustainability and resilience. Now, those are three content areas that are of importance to Eden Prairie. They are local priorities. So, the Met Council, as you can imagine, sets some standards and has some minimum requirements for all of those planned chapters that you see on the left-hand side of your screen. There's certain information that has to be built into the plan in order for them to do their regional analysis. As much as it, the plan needs to meet that regional need, it also needs to be reflective of the local community. So, as a community, we know that social equity, community health, and sustainability are priorities for Eden Prairie. So, how could we weave those into the plan? We talked about that internally for quite some time to try and figure out what was the best approach. And there was discussion about should they be their own chapters, or should they be call-outs within the plan. Ultimately, we determined at a staff level that it made more sense to have them be call-outs within the plan, because there are a lot of things that the city does in its day-to-day operations, or residents or businesses do in the day-to-day operations of their property, that meet the goals of sustainability and social equity. And if you're a user of the plan, you might not realize that those actions that are being taken to, say, transition native, existing yards to native landscaping is really a sustainability measure. So, putting that into the plan in the appropriate areas will serve as a way to acknowledge the efforts that the city has already made, as well as to educate the reader as to what certain things they might be able to do to improve sustainability or promote social equity or community health. So, if you look through the plan, you'll see call-outs, and they're kind of color-coded, and they identify not only existing practices, but also best management practices or ideas that the city could utilize to further enhance those areas. So, that is something that is unique to Eden Prairie's plan. And in the Eden Prairie Today chapter, we have some goals that we will be including that are specific to each of these three areas, some goals and objectives. So, it kind of sets the stage for what the city's trying to achieve within those areas. And if at any point you have questions, just let me know. I'm happy to take a break and answer a question or two. So, I'm not going to read through this whole list, because it's quite lengthy, but there were quite an expansive list of plans and studies and reports that were put together and referred to as part of drafting Aspire Eden Prairie. Eden Prairie feels that we do a lot of outreach with our residents, whether it's the community quality-of-life survey, the business survey that's done with the proper, or business owners within the community. The city is routinely putting questions out on City Connect in order to gain feedback on whatever the hot topic of the, of the day or the month is. So, all of that information was important to provide to the consultants in order to inform what the comp plan should say in order to represent the community overall. There are also policy plans, whether it's the strategic plan for housing and economic development that the council approves. I believe it's every other year they get to, a chance to take a look at it and provide feedback, and then ultimately adopt that document. There are also regional plans, like Thrive 2040, which is the Met Council's regional plans for all communities within the area that influence the direction that certain chapters within the document should take. So, that's important for staff, as well as the consultant, to be aware of when we're drafting our own policies. So, all of these documents went into preparing the draft report. As a part of the demographic and market overview that was done, we took a look at population trends. As you know, populations are getting older. As I typed that in, I thought that sounds kind of funny, because nobody is really getting younger, right? But as a whole, our communities are getting older. That's not something unique to Eden Prairie. That is something that the whole metro is seeing and needing to take a look at with our comp plan updates in order to figure out how to serve those communities. From a racial distribution perspective, we're seeing increased diversity within our community. Again, not something that's unique to Eden Prairie. The median income levels are remaining steady, and they are projected to, you know, at this point, maintain that for quite some time, but we'll be keeping, keeping an eye on that as well. Within this portion of the Eden Prairie Today chapter, this is where you'll find a lot of the Met Council requirements kind of being nestled in here. The Met Council's asking for this information to be reported back for each of the communities, and a bit of an analysis on how that relates back to the Met Council forecasts for population, household, and employment. So, a lot of this information is not necessarily discretionary. It is a required piece of the plan update. Mr. Kirk?
Julie, I had a question, just talking about that. The population trend chart, you know, it's actual data up to 2016. And then, there's kind of a hockey stick, you know, that goes up to 2021. Who's estimate is that? What is the number, 66101? Is that our estimate or Met Council's estimate?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, that is our estimate. As we are looking, as I mentioned earlier, this is a working document. We are refining it and improving it beyond what you, what you have today. I expect that we will also include in here the Met Council forecasts out to 2040. The Met Council does provide forecasts for population and households at 10-year increments, and that will find its way into this chapter as well.
I remember in the 2009 document, the Met, some of the Met Council numbers were eyebrow-raising relative to population growth and some things. So, actually, I'm kind of glad to see that's our number more than, than their number.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, and there are times when the Met Council's numbers are not necessarily right in line with, with the city's numbers. Sometimes they're a little higher, sometimes they're, they're a little lower. But with the Aspire update, we're working really hard to try and bridge that gap, to say, okay, Met Council's asking us to address the number they've provided. That's a requirement we have to meet. But we also want to have a conversation about realistically what we expect at a local level, so that we're kind of meeting the requirements, but planning for both scenarios, if you will.
Yeah, we have to, we have to meet their requirements, but I think we have to be realistic in our own world, not just the Met Council world.
That's what we're, we're striving to do with this document.
Good.
So. Another couple of items that are addressed in the market and demographic overview relate to housing unit types and affordable need. So, this chapter breaks down the inventory of types of housing units that the city of Eden Prairie has, and also includes what the Met Council has identified as our affordable housing need over the course of time from now until 2040. And that number is roughly at about 1,400 units for affordability, and that is new units, not, you know, not the total of the existing. So, again, that's information that's required to be built into the plan, and we'll have additional information supporting that when we get to the housing chapter and review that in a couple of weeks. And then, the last piece of information that's included here is the employment and commercial industrial information. It talks about the types of employers that Eden Prairie has prominently. For instance, a few of those are listed here, finance and insurance, manufacturing, professional services. Notes that we have a healthy industrial market within our community. Certainly, Eden Prairie is an employment hub, and that is certainly a goal to maintain that over time. So. As we move on through that chapter, we provide a overview of the community outreach results. And this portion of the chapter really works to identify the priority issues and concerns that we heard back from that really broad-ranging. It's really hard to take all of that information from all of those different venues and consolidate it into just a very small snippet and a couple of talking points, but this is my attempt to do so. So, there was a lot of discussion in all focus groups. It didn't really matter if we were talking about transportation or housing or even public art. There was a lot of discussion about wanting to accommodate demographic changes and social equity within the community. So, that was not limited just to the social equity focus group. It was amazing how much all of these themes transcended lines, and everybody kind of discussed the same things. There was also discussion about maintaining and enhancing community image. Eden Prairie is a zip code of choice. It has been for quite some time, and a desire on part of the city, as well as its residents, to maintain. to maintain, maintain that status. There was a discussion, again, across many focus groups about creating a destination gathering space within our community. So, while there is the town center designation, and there's a lot of plans that have been put into place in order to create a pedestrian-friendly and very vibrant town center, Eden Prairie doesn't have the traditional downtown that many other communities have. And that was something that was shared routinely throughout the focus groups, you know, talking about what can we do to create more of that feeling? How can we attract destination uses in order to bring people into the community? That type of conversation. There was also a lot of discussion about sustainability and environmental pres- preservation, everything from maintaining natural areas to incorporating additional sustainability into our new development projects, as well as any existing projects, just improvements that property owners or business owners can make to their own properties in order to improve the environment and have a positive, positive impact. There was discussion also about redevelopment and housing needs and economic development. What kind of jobs can the city realistically expect to attract and retain, looking out to 2040? As our population ages and changes, what will the housing needs be? As we've discussed in several of our work sessions with council, roughly 45% of Eden Prairie's housing stock was built between 1980 and 1989. So, there's a lot of very similar type of housing that's out there. So, do we need to capture, work to capture a different type of housing product, looking forward as, as our residents continue to age? And then, also, just identifying the strengths and assets of the community. Routinely, one item that was shared was the strength of the school district. Certainly, that's an attraction for people looking to locate here, either for work or for, primarily to, to live, but also with regard to job market. And then, also, the natural resource areas, what a beautiful community we have because of all of the natural features and the work that has been done by city councils and planning commissions in the past, along with the development community, to maintain those areas and preserve them over time. Yep.
A question?
Commissioner Villarreal, please.
So, I apologize if it's in, if it's in the chapter. How many workshops did commission, did city staff hold?
Chair members of the commission, I do have a running list at my desk, and I want to say we were at, we were at roughly 60 different events. When you say workshops, I want to make sure I'm getting at the gist of your question.
Sure. So, in, in the chapter, there are pictures of people sitting in a room.
Yep.
And I presume that's a different type of event than having a booth at a community event?
Correct. So, the picture that you're referring to would have been one of our focus group meetings, where we invited folks in to talk about a specific topic. There were also, like I said, community events that we were present at. There was work sessions with the Planning Commission and the City Council. I think we've had five or six of those already. There were meetings and presentations that were given to the Noon Rotary, the Chamber of Commerce, several church groups. I'm trying to think who else, at the Senior Center. So, we've got a running list of all of those. And in, in addition to that, we worked with the consultant to prepare a DIY meeting, or essentially, a meeting in a bag, where we could hand that meeting off to any resident or community member that wanted to go out and do that with their book club, or their homeowners association, or their church group, compile the results, and get them back to us, so that we could kind of reach a little further than just staff carrying all of that water.
So, how many focus groups were held?
How many focus groups? I believe there were eight different focus groups.
On the eight different topics?
On eight different topics, and they met twice. Don't quote me exactly on that number, but I'm pretty close to it.
And do you have an idea of how many people generally attended, or an average number of people who attended the focus groups?
The focus group attendance really varied depending on topics. So, some of them, for instance, like the public art, focus group was much less attended than, say, the transportation. Transportation had, I'm going to say, close to 35 attendees, but on average, I think it's safe to say somewhere between 16 to 20 people at every focus group.
And the last one, I'm sorry to badger you with this, is, do you know if there was any overlap in attendees at the workshops, at the focus? Do you know if there were people who attended each one of the focus group meetings?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, we had several individuals who participated in two focus groups. You know, some folks might have an interest in housing and in transportation, so they participate in both and provide their comments. We did have one person who participated in three different focus groups. She also took a DIY meeting home and did that with a couple of different groups that she's a part of. So, we did have some really enthusiastic participants in the process.
Sorry, I'll do one more then. Do you get the sense that the attendees at the focus groups are representative of the residents of Eden Prairie?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I would say wholeheartedly yes. For instance, when we had the empty nester focus group focusing on housing, I was very impressed and, and happy to see that we had, while we were targeting folks that were empty nesters, we had people who were more practiced at being empty nesters, and those who were just starting to think about becoming empty nesters. And as we went around the room and talked with all of them, it was clear that they were representing a broad geographic representation of the city. So, they weren't all from just one quadrant of the city. They were equally dispersed throughout the community. I think the community engagement that was done online, and the millennial surveys also, really reached a broad audience. And that's, those are a couple of examples that we can look back and quantify, that, that broad reach, and be confident that we've attained that.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for indulgence.
Very welcome. Great questions.
The Eden Prairie Tomorrow chapter is a bit of a stretch, probably, to call it a chapter, because in its form right now, it provides a vision statement for what Eden Prairie will be in 2040. And then, it goes on to provide some additional information about the callouts and the goals with regard to sustainability, social diversity, and community health. As staff has looked at that, we feel that the goals for the callouts and the discussion about those specifically probably are better housed in the Eden Prairie Today chapter. So, we're going to move those over there, so that all of the plan organization can be found in one spot. And the Eden Prairie Tomorrow chapter will really focus on what is that vision for 2040? And it's almost, as, if you read those several pages, it's almost, what it reminded me of is if somebody were to find a time capsule, writing a letter to yourself and what you would find in that time capsule. So, it really identifies what Eden Prairie strives to accomplish with the implementation of Aspire Eden Prairie 2040. So, as you can see in, in the slide here, we're, we're trying to focus on maintaining a commitment to being an employment hub and providing a high quality of life for our residents, as well as our corporate residents, maintaining the, being a desirable place to work and live, promoting sustainability throughout the community, and also continuing to be and striving to be even more of a viable and welcoming commi- community, addressing equity and diversity within our community, as well as protection of natural resources and maintaining recreational amenities. Because, again, it is a strength that was identified through a variety of those, those focus groups and, and that outreach. So, in a nutshell, that is what Eden Prairie Today and Eden Prairie Tomorrow chapters highlight. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Just one comment. I, I think this part on the goals and objectives and strategies is just incredibly important. How, how many times have we all been in meetings, and, and you go back to, what are we trying to get done here? You know, and, and from the scientist in me, it's, sometimes you just have to go back to first principles. And so, to have the first principles of what we're trying to do in the comprehensive plan identified in a concise way, so that people can always go back to it, I, I think is just incredibly important. And I didn't think it was bad having it in Eden Prairie Tomorrow, but it could work as long as it's well-identified and, and quantified of what are we trying to get done with this
Along the, the lines of what you're talking about here with the goals that are in here, I have a question, Julie, just on the structure of, of the following chapters. Let's take the housing chapter. Does that have its own specific goals that are in there? And then, how does that kind of, are these broader goals, and then, the goals in other chapters are more specific?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the goals that Commissioner Kirk is, is referring to relate specifically only to those three topics of the callouts, so social equity, community health, and sustainability. When you move into the chapters, land use, transportation, housing, they will have their own goals and objectives that we'll be reviewing as we discuss each of those chapters. So, they will be front and center for each of those topic areas. So, if you're a user of the comp plan, and in a couple of years, you want to go back and look at it, if housing is your area of interest, you'll know that the goals related to housing are within the housing chapter. Not every comp plan is set up that way, so sometimes users have to kind of sift through all of the variety of different goals on a bunch of different topics. We wanted to have them all within specific areas, because, believe it or not, not everybody's interested in all 10 chapters. They have their own areas of focus that they might want to look at.
Commissioner Villarreal.
So, if this is a wordsmithing comment, please let me know, so you don't have to answer this. Reading the Tomorrow one, on the sustainable resilience, object, for sustainable resilience, Goal One, Objective 1A, you have several strategies. And strategy number two is amend the zoning ordinance to regulate the use of solar energy and other forms of renewable energy. The question is, what does the word "regulate" mean in that context?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I would propose that regulate means specifically addressing them in the ordinance. Our zoning ordinance as a community was written in 1969, and while it, it has had fixes along the way, it's not been dramatically overhauled and addressed in, as a whole. So, there are issues that face the community that we bring forward, code amendments to you and the City Council to take a look at. But, as you can imagine, in 1969, sustainability and solar and all of those types of issues were not a, a priority to be addressed. And right now, they're handled more on an interpretive level through our zoning ordinance than a very specific.
Sure. I guess, I just bring it up as a former state regulator of electricity. Making sure that the words "regulate the use" is specifically in the context of what the city is allowed to oversee, as opposed to what the state via the PUC regulates the use of?
Understood. Certainly, with the comp plan or the zoning ordinance in either of those scenarios, the city's not looking to overstep its authority, rather just establish what the parameters are, so that users of the zoning ordinance or the comp plan, being the residents or developers in the community, can easily find what the expectation is, or what the rules are, with regard to whatever they might be proposing or thinking about doing.
Thank you.
I would second the need for, because when I read through it, that word just went, when I, when I read it, it's like, yeah, there's, there's got to be a better way to say that. So, I...
And, and as I said, staff is in the process of reviewing the chapters one by one. I just met with Mr. Born this afternoon to review a couple of the chapters, and we've got a lot of different eyes on, on this document in order to wordsmith and flush out all of the details.
Could you hit for us just the high points of the schedule moving forward, when some of these drafts might be available for the public viewing?
So, last slide in the presentation is up next. So, on July 9th, we will have a review of the Parks chapter and the Community Facilities chapter. And I did email out to the rest of the commission what the schedule will be for the rest of the summer. I think after that, it's economic competitiveness and the special area studies, and then, following that, it's land use and housing, and then, lastly, it's transportation and water infrastructure, if I remember correctly. But, I can certainly resend that email, so that you guys can keep abreast of what those are, and kind of be perusing through those chapters beforehand.
And for the listening public, when will the first, I'll call it the final draft, if you will, be available for public viewing, and then, ultimate adoption?
Well, the document in its current form is available for viewing right now on, on the city's website. And certainly, we've established an email account that, that folks can comment on. The chapters are also being pushed out through City Connect in order to gain any comment through that outreach as well. As we continue to have discussions with the commission and take your feedback and any answer, questions you have, as well as staff taking a look at it, we will be updating these chapters throughout the summer, so that the intent is, when we come back for public hearing process, we've got a more polished version of this document. And of course, we're looking to submit to the Met Council after public hearings at the City, Planning Commission and City Council. So, a, a bit of that is, is fluid, depending on the process through those planning, or public hearings, excuse me.
Great. Commissioners, any final questions for Julie on this topic? I want to thank you for the excellent presentation. I've been particularly impressed with the wide variety of assortment of tools and strategies for public outreach. Technology's afforded us that, but I think the creativity and, and ideas that you've brought forth are terrific, and I certainly would encourage anybody in our listening audience to participate still. And for further comment, it's just a great opportunity to help shape our environment.
And if you have any questions, don't hesitate to shoot me an email. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Okay. Next on the agenda, members' reports. Does anybody have any? If not, I would like to speak to a topic that maybe all of us commissioners got an email on. I believe it was last Friday from our city manager. Eden Prairie was voted as part of the 150 Best Places to Work in the state of Minnesota for some years running now. I understand that we're the only city municipal government employer that is on the list of 150 best places to work. And I think that's hats off to our city manager, our city council, our department heads. And I'm, I'm proud to be a member of this city, as, as well as all of us are, I know, and I think that that's worthy of some public acknowledgement.
Agreed.
Any continuing business? I don't believe we had any new business. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion from Weber, and a second from Higgins. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? We are adjourned.
[inaudible]
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 [inaudible]